Okay. We're live for right now. I guess I'll start. And Jeremy Martin, my name is Director of Town Cameron. And then we have with a channeling near the new town plan that we have. You know, not done a planning or meeting in person in a lot, so we're here. We have a couple of business to attend to before we get to the application. We've got a new planning board member, Mark Murray. And Pat Chen has been appointed as a full member, an alternate member, and Ethan Shaw was reappointed. And Chris O, this term, I think they actually extended your term for it on the other night.
Fantastic.
Yeah, there's more to do on Chris.
You didn't even have to ask him to do it for me, that's okay.
True.
It's a life sentence.
What's that, Ethan?
It's a life sentence.
Yeah.
And I just want to, for everyone, Ethan is on Zoom and we're seeing him via this owl that's in front of us. And the owl picks up sound. And so if there's people talking back over here and someone over here, it'll try to do both at the same time. So try to let one person eat their time. If that works for everyone. The board does need to, in fact, to appoint a chair and a vice chair. And I guess I let the planning board make a motion on a chair or vice chair.
I will, I will make a motion to nominate Ethan to convene his chair.
Second.
Mark, any other nominations from? Do I?
You're, you're in, Mark, yes.
Okay.
Go on this.
So I just get, oh, well.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second. I will accept, thankfully. I appreciate the honor. And I guess we go to a vote then for the rest of the board. So a roll call. And welcome, by the way, Mark. I look forward to meeting you in person and also Shenley. I look forward to meeting you in person as well. So I will go around and do the roll call. So Chris O.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
Also, Pat, congratulations on your permanent appointment.
All right, thank you.
And Mark.
Hi.
Okay, that's, three i's will carry. Now we will take nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Chris O as vice chair.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion, any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote there. Pat.
Hi.
Mark. And that's an eye from me. That's three i's that will carry. I assume we don't vote for ourselves. You can always say nay, Chris O. Okay, so that takes care of that business. And again, we have, just if anybody is listening out there, we do have some open seats on the board. And we're always looking for new interested members of the community to join. So please do get in touch with our planning office if you're interested in joining the planning board. It's, it's more interesting and fun than it may appear at these meetings. Let's see, so moving on then, we need a motion to appoint Mark as a voting member.
So.
Second. We have a motion and a second to appoint Mark Murray as a voting member for the evening's business. I'll go around and take a roll call. Pat.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
It's an eye from me, so move. All right. Let's see, we are now at the point where we have any public comment on non-agenda items. Jeremy, I'm going to rely on your eye out there. Is Jeremy still here?
Um, I'm sorry. I was trying to, I couldn't figure out how to do that. I can't click on them. There are no non-agenda items. We're trying to get two people into the meeting and I for some reason I couldn't get them in.
Okay, I'm sorry, you can go back to that, that's fine. That will take us on the agenda then to the site plan review of the application for Bay Chamber concerts at Five Mountain Street. The owner of the building is Bay Chamber Con- Concerts. And the agent will be Mike Sabatini from Landmark Associates, who led us on a site walk. We will see the folks who were present at the site walk were Pat Chen, Chris O'Rowe, and myself. Jeremy also was there. I think that's it for the planning board, is that right? Yep. And we conducted a site walk of the, of the lot and the project that's going on. And we got the lay of the land, so to speak. So right now, what we're going to do is do a couple of details we need to take care of. So first of all, does anybody sitting on the board have a conflict of interest or bias in this matter? Seeing none, okay. And I did just do the, the members present, I'll just confirm that on the site visit. That was, Pat, you were there?
Yes.
And Chris O?
Yeah.
Yep, and I was there. And let's see, so then we have a public hearing where we will hear from the applicant. And there will be an opportunity for a public comment, questions from the board, then responses, of course, from the applicant, and then further questions from the public, at which point we will close the public hearing. And then the board will go into deliberation. Once public comment period is closed after the second opportunity, there will be no more further public comment permitted. I got that right, didn't I? I flew blind on that one, I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
I would just want to add for the public and for Mark being here, that site visit, there was no discussion of like the project in and of itself. It was really a discussion, it was really kind of having the applicant layout, show the board where things were on the site. So we didn't dive into like the approval criteria or things like that, get reviewed. And that can only happen in this form. For site visits, site walks, it's just really kind of for the board to be able to kind of see the lay of the land and see where the project is, you know, the each and the hounds of like the addition and those kinds of things. That's all.
Yeah, yeah, but thank you for that, Jeremy, because that's important. Excuse me. Okay, so I am going to mute myself and turn it over then to our to Jeremy, are you going to handle the planning summary this time?
Yeah, I guess I'm going to handle that this time, yeah.
This, this may be your, your, your swan song?
Maybe, but likely not.
Yeah, okay, so we'll have Jeremy's planner summary. And then we'll go into hearing from the, from the applicant. Go ahead, Jeremy.
All right, thank you. So what we have for you is an application from Bay Chamber Concerts and Mike Sabatini, Landmark Engineering, who is the consultant for Bay Chamber. The reason this is being heard by the planning board, it's under chapter 290, Article 12, 290, deck 12.1, applicability A1 from the town's code ordinances. And the reason again is because this is a new construction, a non-residential building, or an addition to a thousand square feet or more. And what is proposed is a about 140 square foot entry, entryway, if you will, and then what's that, a 1,250 square foot addition or so. Did that quick math?
Yeah, yeah, additional floor area.
Right, additional floor area on top of what was an existing building. This is a second floor addition. And I would say that, and I think everyone understands and can see that there are projects happening already out there. What we have permitted, just so everyone knows, is not this, these additions. What we have permitted is a project moving forward without these additions on it. Because that requires your approval. And so they did demo, demo a big portion of the building. And then the new addition is going there on the existing footprint. And then there's a second story, a second floor addition going in how that, what would be existing building area. And then there is some traffic operations changes that are proposed. What is currently, there are two parking lots currently on the site. One that comes in off of Mountain Street and then one that comes in off of MacDuck to Cook, that's the larger parking lot. What is proposed is to shrink down the size of the parking lot up front coming out of Mountain. Make that one way, currently it's not, and then connect, connect to the rear parking lot, which is where the entryway is. And then it would be an exit on the down to Cook Street. There is a net decrease in impervious surface on the property as well. And we have to go to detail about that. I don't think I missed anything. I think that's, I think that's pretty much it, summary of the project and why you were hearing it. And I just wanted to remind you that your approval criteria that we review is in the ordinance and you have that. The applicant has addressed the approval criteria. Shenley, myself, and Clint, Director and Co., have reviewed the project for completeness. And we find that the applicant, application is complete. Shenley provided a memo to you previously about the project. And I just would like you guys to enter that on the record as well, as well as as long as I need, finding it complete. And that's all I have right now. I, I need to sit out with my office or if I can print out an email that someone sent to us. I want to make sure I have that for you for the record. After that, I will turn it over to Ethan, back to you, and then probably back to Mike.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. Yeah, so I'll go ahead and move that relying on the testimony of the staff of the Planning and Development Office and the listing of the applicant submissions is outlined in the application narrative dated October 19, 2022. We find that the site plan application is complete.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll take a roll call vote.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
And it's an eye for me for zero. Motion carries. Okay, and just a quick review of the, of how the process will work. We'll, we'll hear from the applicant. Then there will be a round of public comment and questions from the board. Second round of public comments. And then final comments from the board. And we'll then close the public hearing. So, Mike, I, I turn it over to you to, to give us the lay of the land and, and explain the project.
Yeah, thank you very, very much. Like to do some introductions first and and then, you know, Monica Kelly can speak a little bit about Bay Chamber Concerts. And then we'll talk a little bit about the, the building project part of this. And then I'll go over the site plan and, and we'll talk about the landscaping as well. So introductions, my name's Michael Sabatini, I'm with Landmark Corporation Surveyor and Engineer on behalf of Bay Chamber Concerts.
And Monica Kelly, Executive Director at Bay Chamber.
We also have the architect.
Nancy Barbe of Barbeville Architects.
And landscape designer.
It's Pete's. I can't, I'm colored one second, so if your mics are on.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
There you go. And you can do that now.
Mine is muted because I'm not, I'm talking right here. I was trying to say one hundred of the lights.
So just, we're going to go over this middle a little bit and Jeremy did find out of saying why we're here. I would like to just add that, you know, there is a project going on out there. And there was a phased approach to this project and that what's happening now could be considered like a first phase, which would not require a first plan review. Even that little 140 square foot addition would not pass the threshold of needing second plan review. It's the second floor, as Jeremy mentioned, that would kick you into this review and that's why we're here. So this middle, I hope you found that the letter was helpful, goes over the site plan content, the approval criteria and the performance standards. And included with this middle is an application, the D, they have a fire marshal permit already. Of course, the plan, there's a schedule plan, there's a site plan, and a detailed plan, and all that's great plan. With that, I think I'll hand it over to Nancy, she's a little stuck with a couple of improvements inside from the programming. And then we'll, we'll come back to the second one.
I'm Nancy Barbe from Barbeville Architects. We are based in Portland, but I'm a former Camden resident. And that's the lady when Monica called me and said that she wants to work on this project. I used to live in the neighborhood, about two blocks away from Harmon Avenue for all two summers while I was in college, working for Chris Glass. So it was the way I needed more to know that he had worked on the land through it, it's by Mountain Hall. And so just wanted to say that very familiar with the area, knew his building when it was agway, so it's come a long way from that. And probably be contributing to Camden again after so many years. We've done all over the state, so I haven't been in Camden as much as would have liked to have been. The program for the project was to move the program for Bay Chamber from Rockport to Camden. And when we first came to the building, our expertise is really in fitting historic, fitting new programs in historic buildings. That's, we've been doing that for almost 40 years in Maine. And this was like a perfect fit. We actually thought we could leave a lot of it the same, much to our surprise. When the work was done 15 years ago, the original floor of the main building with some gray was put down over a water rushing through below and bad timbers and things that were just out of sight. The whole floor ended up moving. And we don't usually see that kind of situation, but luckily Andrew McKenney here, also contractor with E M Builders, was pointing out, you know, we're better off starting back from the beginning. We're also looking at acoustical issues, many going too much detail. The acoustics with his doctor's offices aren't the same as studios for sound performance. They said, you know, you really should start over. If you're taking out the floor, you can't really leave the office, so that meant. So we kept the upper floor, but it became a shallow below. Then we thought, oh, we can hold on to the agway part in the back, it looked pretty stable. But let's take the roof off because that's really shadow, listing of the walls. We started trying to top down, the floor's fine. They got into it and realized the concrete foundation was just a wreck. So next thing you know, we're down to a new foundation back. So we do have a beautiful sort of building that's remained. But we have a whole new foundation and all new floors and we're starting back up. But the news from the, so the program are small studios for practice with one-on-one instruction, sometimes we're on two. There's not, there are nine of those and there's, they're mostly in here and then one here and then two in the most scary, first, first, second floor. Orientation is, is a mountain road. And then this is the orange, part of the new walls on the second floor, new walls inside. All the gray exterior are existing walls. You can see first floor is all new walls there. And then several, two larger classrooms, ones orchestra room and percussion, push as far away as you can so the noise can be contained. And these rooms are doing that, this is a classroom, chamber of music for five, 12 people, not larger scale. And then taking the incredible accretion on the second floor for performances, only about 100, 120 people could be within that space. It's really a small scale original church, where the church was on the original floor below. It's now an aircraft. They had just some fire improvements, but that's a small scale room space. That work, that will probably not, very rarely will be happened at the same time as the studios be occupied. There's not enough staff, there probably never will be enough staff to move at the same time. So that, we've taken that into consideration. From a this kind of, so that programmatically, we are Ethan summarized that we're adding only 140 square feet, which is this little box here on the first floor, on the first floor. Second floor is this addition here. First floor is basically built in back over the original footprint, right where it was. And because we're going to retain the foundation, which turned out to be not true. And also because it was non-conforming, because this is pretty much the property lines here to the north, north. So we were retaining, I retain the volume of the floor. This is existing building of areas that were within the present day setbacks. There's no, it was built when it didn't have those setbacks. So this is what's now non-conforming. We weren't planning on changing any of that except for that little piece. And what one of these first book, Jeremy, the setback was 15 feet from the line to that point. So we built up from there and that's where the second floor starts. It's not showing you the rest of the volume, cut away for clarity. That's the piece that we're adding. We since did volume calculations and the maximum amount of lateral volume with a 30% increase overall will be 21,709 cubic feet. We're at 20,590 cubic feet. So we didn't use up all the nice olive oil. We're shy of about 100 and something square cubic feet. So within the realm, so the full expansion square footage is about 16%. The wall, the total square footage, grand total is 8,520. So it's 21, 16% difference. Still a pretty small building when it comes down to it. So that's what I know. There was a warning, but there is, but that's.
Great, I apologize, we have a little agenda here. Monica, so do you want to, do you want to kind of back check a little bit and give, you know, your perspective on the agenda is more, this project.
I've got everything to get out of it. So Bay Chamber is a 62-year-old institution. And actually, it started in Camden. It's been in Rockport, Rockport for many years now. But the first concerts that happened were in the physical church here in Camden. And it's grown tremendously in the last 10 years, really. Looks like forming a music school. It was a concert series mainly in the summer to start and then became year-round in the 1970s. And then in around, around 1990, started to expand into some educational programming, but it was very workshop oriented across, across many years. But in 2010, which was the 50th anniversary of Bay Chamber, the board decided to form a music school. And in all honesty, I think all of us thought, maybe, you know, 50 students would come. We have like three or four teaching spaces and and it turned out to be, the demand turned out to be much, much higher. We moved into a beautiful facility that actually Mike and I worked on together in Rockport, 18 Central Street, which was at that time owned by Lucadia. And they bid it out of a music school for us, 4,000 square feet, seven teaching studios. And right in Rockport where we had the Opera House up the block and Union Health down the block. And, and that really worked for us for a long time. Now we're to the point where we've taken over three other spaces in our building and our rent is very high. And it started to feel like it was necessary for us to look for another solution. And serendipitously, this building was for sale. I'm very good friends, longtime friends with Maxideris, the owner. And just upon entering the building, we realized particularly with what was the yoga studio upstairs, that it was a perfect performance space. The acoustics were amazing. And the doctor's offices at the time before, we learned all the things that Nancy just explained. Seemed like they could just double us. Music studios just needed soundproofing. But it became a much bigger project and actually it's a beautiful project. And it's going to be a beautiful building and every space in, in it will be soundproofed and acoustically treated to meet the needs of not only the music school, but the concert series. To be right in downtown Camden and have access to the middle school across a couple of blocks where many of our students come from, to be close to the library and for parents to be able to get back and forth between their various children's activities will be such an advantage for us. And we're, we're really excited to be part of the energy and the business community and artistic community of, of the environment. So thank you.
Great, thank you. So I'll dig I'll dig into the site plan a little bit, if that's okay. You know, not a lot going on on the site, but there is, you know, one major big improvement and that is to the circulation involved into this building and parking lot before it was an engine of, of Mountain Street. Separate from an entrance off of, so and they don't connect, and so it's a little bit awkward, even when you're going there and know which way to go. But the solution to that is to make it one-way in off of Mountain Street, which will go past a draw-off area and that's that new addition, the addition to the entrance addition. And then you can travel to the back parking lot and then safely exit the parking area. Much better circulation, it'll make common sense to people. They'll get it as soon as they go there for the first time, will have some signage. So that's, that's the big idea or major thing that's going on on the site. There was 38 spaces to begin with, where because of this change, we're losing two. But the 36, which is exactly what the parking calculation came out to be, which detailed in the letter. Utilities, not a lot going on there either. No change to the water services, there's always sprinkler buildings with sprinkler service and dramatic service. The steward, it fills out the back of the building underneath the back parking lot. There was some comments from the steward department about, you know, the status of that. It was an old one, right? We did have it camered and we just found out today that it's PVC over to the parking lot. And it's very clean and, and which, so no, no improvements need to be made there.
Mike, we did share that from the board later.
Oh, you did, excellent, that's right, thank you very much. Underground power is going to be in the same general location, it's upgraded and going to a same side of building and will be underground, there's no, no big change there. On the site, we talked a little bit about drainage. As Jeremy mentioned, there's actually 1,400 square feet less impervious area. Just, you know, there's some less impervious there here, here, a little bit moved there, some right here. So just adding up, some taken away, some added. And that result was 1,400 square feet less, which should help reduce any stormwater. And the, the path of the stormwater is in the same direction. It's all heading back towards the back parking lot. So even when these parking lots were separate, maybe you noticed this in the site walk, stormwater came around this way and ends up going down the path to the back parking lots and or in the sun pump, which Andrew talked about. But nonetheless, that's the same drainage pattern that's going to happen now. You head back to the back parking lot. It was observed that in order to protect the neighbors, we should put some curving on the parking lot and that's shown on this plan. And a comment was made by Dave St. Laurent, which is kind of like a work director, that that catch base in this right off the edge of the parking lot, I'd originally said I needed to replace the grade or fix the grade. But he suggested that it be completely replaced. And I've since, on this plan in front of the ear, not the one you have in the packet. I made a note of that in order to change to say, yeah, we really need to replace that catch base. So that's what's going on with drainage.
Mike, maybe just to clarify that curb line coming along that line to the parking lot. Right now, she's, she flows over the rock and the, on the border.
Yeah, we will have it now and take it directly to that beneath the basin. So that, the border's going to get in. Yeah, we will have it now and take it directly to that, the meeting and basin, so that the butter's going to get less. I would add also that, um. You can see there's a little drain line here, we're going to have some gutters, some gutters on this backside of the thing as well to protect the, the butter. Um, I think there's some concern about, about that as well, so. Um, I thought I have the site, the only thing we haven't talked about yet, and if you're going to wait a little bit longer, Aces here to talk about the landscaping proposed. Um.
Like add one thing to what I've just said, and then, but one of the things I'm particularly proud of this is that the safety factor is greatly, you know, the children being dropped off. Into the site and by creating a pathway through, rather than coming, having everyone come through, uh, either back. If you come in and you realize you can't get to the main door to go back, back out or go up the hill and that going down. It's really quite dangerous for kids now, especially for small children, parents dropping them off. Of by creating a path through, you now have taken a lot of pressure from the Guntecook. Street and neighbors, there'll be a lot less traffic going, because there's two ways in like Guntecook, but there's at least. Path to people are coming in, but most people are going to come in one way, go out the other, but the way is two way, so it's going to take a lot of pressure off the neighborhood. People who used to come in, they would get it most of the time, they're the water groups, so I think that's, I'm particularly proud to be, are able to cut through there. Come through, yeah.
See, I already covered most of the major, both site features here, walk over some of the smaller, still notable existing and posed landscape features. Um, obviously been maintaining and. Keep these two larger versions that are currently there, there's also a. So mature beech tree and two crested dogwood and some smaller prairie planting as well, so. Uh, stay as well and protected that whole project duration. Some removals, mostly just based on construction needs, obviously your parking rearrangement, you require a big L shaped cedar hedge to be, uh, removed. And there's some removals, also to ground, uh, some foundation plantings that were taken out for, uh, work on the structure as well. Proposed features, again, might remember most of them, but they're. Mostly adding in plantings wherever possible and some pockets, um, proposing some shade trees in the, you know, parking areas, mostly based to. Asphalt, hopefully, you know, limit, uh, solar on those areas, there's also, as I mentioned, decrease in impervious areas, also decrease. Uh, overall lawn, uh, plus an increase in, you know, mostly native vegetation in areas. Small proposed patio off of the back deck there, um, and, uh, kind of a beach hedge would be about six feet tall or so for some privacy for. Uh, the site and neighbors as well. Uh, the sign in front of the existing and some lightage that will all stay as is. Um, and we're still kind of unforeseen circumstances here, uh, for that parking area, how we're going to treat some of the remaining areas, but. Either mixture of using ledge as is or bringing in boulders, um, they'll be tastefully done, retaining feature there, either way. Hoping to add a, you know, nicer and more quantity bike rack scenario, I know, like I mentioned, a lot of. Uh, kids obviously travel by bike, which is great, want to encourage that, so hoping to add more spaces there if possible. That covers most of the changes and improvements to landscaping. Anything else to go over?
No, uh, I think, I know we just received, uh. We talked about some noise.
I was gonna re-.
Yeah, let's, let's wait on the letter until we get to the public hearing portion, um. Thank you, everyone, for the, for the presentation, I'll, uh, now open it up to the board for any questions you might have of the applicants.
Public comment first?
Um, no, I think we normally have.
I thought usually public comment, especially the board.
You guys are good?
No, I thought public comment.
All right, we'll go to public comment then.
Go ahead then, yeah.
Yep. Uh, I guess I'll read, I've got two, um. Uh, two public comments, um, this is from, I was reading them in, this has been emailed today, um, from Brian. Um, Salasowski, try it, hopefully you got that right, um. His question, uh, his comment, we're mostly, um. Curious about, um. The parking situation, there tends to be a lot of street parking on Mountain Street during tours, even though we are hoping this is going to turn into a year round. Happy to stream, be on YouTube or that, that, or whatever, um. So that was his comments, uh, it was really about parking, um, and it seemed to be on the off street parking on Mountain Street, um. And I can touch on that if you'd like now, the board can comment on how I responded to him, or if you want to just keep going and comment and I can address that later. Give me the reason.
Thank you, why don't we go ahead and, uh, finish the public comment period and then we'll, uh, we'll direct questions to you on those.
Okay, and then, uh, and then I did get an email, um, letter I shared with the board, I think I did, um, from Long Funeral Home. Uh, which is the adjacent property owner. Uh, here's Camden playing board members, thank you for the notification of the building expansion of Bay Chamber Concerts and Musical, now appearing to express our concerns. We are sorry that we aren't able to attend the meeting and are submitting this letter on our behalf. It also appears that the expansion has already been started as there is a new foundation of the back of the building. We are pleased to have new neighbors and realize it appears condition will be long and extensive. The Mountain Street, the Guntecook Street neighborhood has always been a quiet and safe neighborhood. Our historic red brick building at Nine Mountain Street, the Long Funeral Home was built in eighteen fifty two as a district school. When built, it was one of only two early Camden school buildings, it is remarkable that it's almost a hundred and seventy years, years old and still useful operation. Since nineteen twenty eight, our building has been operated with funeral home for the past thirty years, which two previous owners of the side of Mount, uh, Mountain Street. Have allowed, um, us to use their parking lot behind our building, uh, when there were no functions going on at their building. The noise generated by the demolition and renovation of five Mountain Street has been horrific for our business. There was constant pounding and jackhammering for weeks, causing us to cancel our scheduled appointment on several occasions. The nature of a funeral home requires us to be available twenty four seven and is extremely sensitive. Our work requires a very quiet, uh, private, quiet, respectful place for families to greet, view their loved ones, to document a whole funeral arrangement conservative. Increased traffic and the speed of traffic will have safety concerns for our business during virgins or funeral procession. It is necessary for us to back our Cad- Cadillac first out of our small garage and into traffic out of Guntecook Street. Another traffic concern should be consideration of the heavy pedestrian traffic up and down the Guntecook Street to access hiking trails. And the increased traffic flow and the speed of that traffic can create a dangerous presence for our operation, neighbors and pedestrians. The traffic on Mountain Street is very heavy and vehicles often travel at a high rate of speed ignoring the speed limit. The length of Bay Chambers functions with any, with any increased noise could also negatively affect our business during visitations, calling hours, funeral service. We trust that the planning board will give our concerns understanding, sincerely, Julia, Clint and John Long.
Hey, thank you, Jeremy.
Yes.
Um, is there any other public comments? Anyone there?
You'd like to come up and, yeah, if I could just for a second, sure.
Please, please say, please say your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Matthew Hayes, I'm one of the owners at, uh, One Mountain Street, which is the Bean House, it's right next door. Um, first of all, thanks for having, you know, a public forum where we can kind of talk, um. And thanks for the information that's already been, been given, uh, some of, some of our minor concerns, I think, have been addressed, there was a lot of noise. For a couple of weeks there, a lot of major pounding that felt like they were. Taking a new foundation, which may have been the case, they may have had against them, but that's, that's unavoidable, uh, we, we understood that that was, that was part of it. Um, they also addressed the, the parking situation and I, I think, um. Having the vehicles come off of Mountain Street and then exit on the, was a good idea. I think that will help traffic flow quite a bit and so ease some, some of our concerns. Um, the only remaining concern, I believe, would just be the amount of noise that might have been in the building, because we are literally right next door. Um, uh, I think, um, this woman, what was her name again? Monica, I think, did you run from, did you run to the Bean House?
Yes.
From my neighborhood, yeah, okay, so you brought it, sing a legend, anyway, um, uh. I just, I just wanted to sort of address that, um, upfront and then, um. We're actually excited about having the music center there, we were just a little bit concerned, most of the owners actually love Bay, Bay Chamber music and, and, uh. And, and they're, they're glad to have it there, but we were just a little bit concerned about what the noise might be. Uh, if you, if you could perhaps address a little bit further, uh, the soundproofing of the rooms and, and how much noise might, that would be, that would be all, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else?
Doesn't appear to have anything.
Okay, um, we'll close the first round of public comment, there will be one more opportunity for the public to comment. Um, now we'll have an opportunity for the board to direct questions to the applicant. Um, and I'll, I'll start off just because I had, um, the same question, so I'll, I'll direct it, I guess, to Monica as far as the noise. Um, issue which, which came up in the last public comment, um. Obviously, it's a permitted use, um, to, to have the, the concert hall there in the school. Um, but can you just address briefly the, what you anticipate the, uh, the. The frequency and the, the volume of the noise that will emanate from the building to the neighbors?
Yes, I'd be happy to, um, so. The thing about a music school and a concert hall is you have to keep it quiet. Um, you have to keep it quiet from one room to another and you have to keep as much outside side noise from coming in. So there's been an extensive, um, study, acoustical evaluation of how we can best. Essentially soundproof the building, um. So I don't anticipate there will be enough noise coming from the building. Um, one thing just about Bay Chamber is that we don't really present amplified music. We only present acoustic music and, um, and none of our concerts go really past about nine o'clock at night. Uh, may, maybe at the latest, um, we have about forty concerts a year that are presented to the public. Not all of them will be in this building, um, we'll use the Rockport Opera House. Some of you may know that we rented a tent and had all of our summer concerts in the amphitheaters this year. Um, the scale of the concerts that would be happening at the hall would be a hundred people or less, that's. That capacity, um, one hour long acoustic. Maybe a classical guitar and piano, string quartet, so not really loud music. Um, we did, we did call one of the rooms percussion studio, but we have two drum students that come for half an hour lessons once a week. That's the extent of our percussion department right now, and it's something we don't plan on growing. Um, it's, it is actually impressive to us, even in the music school, to offer drum lessons and there's another music school in the area that does. So we won't be having a percussion room much longer, the two little boys just have to graduate from high school. Um, so that, I hope that answers the question.
It does, just one quick follow up, you won't be, um, leasing the halls for any, um, other, other, uh, events or, or music then, is that? True, is that the case or, or use of any P A system?
Yeah, no, we won't be renting to other organizations.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I just add too, um, I, I just want to make sure the board, and I fully appreciate and understand the questions about noise. Um, but noise is not a criteria that you have within your approval criteria.
Yeah, I, I get that, I just wanted to, I, I figured I knew what the answer was and I wanted to make sure that the public comment was addressed upfront, but thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, we don't even have, it's not, noise isn't even in their billing ordinance, our, our chapter two ninety now, it's, it's. It's tucked away in another section on noise and public conduct.
Right, it's, it's a police ordinance, right?
Police ordinance, correct.
Yeah, yeah.
At the public, if there ever comes a time when noise is a problem, we can address it. Um, at that time separately, um, but I, I, I get it, especially with a music school.
I just, I just figured since it was built into the design of the school and the building, that, that it'd be good to address that. But thank you, and thank you, Monica, for your response, I hope that does help address some of the concerns that we've heard, uh, anyone else on the board have any questions?
Uh, yeah.
Um, when we were doing the sidewalk, Jeremy, I know we were talking about a patio, which I think we knew in this plan. Being in the setback area and was that an issue or not, and I know you said you were going to be checking.
Yeah, and, um, I did review this with Mike Satatini and the, uh, patio is not, does not need to be setback requirements. Um, what does is the little stairs that are coming out, the landings, there are two landing sets there. Uh, and then the, um, the second floor, I bring this up again, this, this, this second floor addition. Is into the setbacks and that's where, um, Nancy talked about the thirty percent expansion allowance. So if you look at the, the calculations that they did, they calculated the, um, cubic, the, the area cubic feet. Um, to get them to the thirty percent expansion level that they're allowed, and so the landings on the two, two doors that are coming off that front side of that, the, I'm going to call it front side. Um, there, um, combined with the second floor addition, color of the square foot addition or so. Um, do not, um, exceed the thirty percent expansion allowance, so they are, this is compliant, there's no anymore as required as this.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Uh, quick question, uh, we talked about at the sidewalk, uh, making sure the lighting was a hundred percent. I have attention to see if that's marking the plan and what they can add, but that's.
So, uh, this, this current plan, uh, doesn't show site lighting, it's only going to be building mounted lighting in this junker. Uh, out of, out of respect actually to the neighborhood and not wanting to Walmartize that back parking lot, it's an inverted residential area. Feeling like the lights that are going to be, there's some ballers that are going to be, uh, placed near the candy cap man. That will shed light at the parking lot, you know, make it more attractive way, so. I assume those would be on timer and.
Yeah.
And photo sensitive, but there is going to be no more, but all mounted, uh, set lights.
So the rest of the parking lot won't have any lighting?
Right. I think there is a, uh, I can double check, but I think there's a stream light in Gintico.
Yeah, yeah. But you're.
And there's one in front of the road too.
Right.
Not like some of the whole area.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I think from a, from a ordinance perspective, any, even building mounted, mounted lights, um, you can't have, um. Glare or any of that direct to light on the premises either, so, um, if it does become an issue, we'll address that.
Okay, any other questions, uh, from members of the, of the board? Okay, um, go ahead. No, okay, um, I guess I'll just, I'll just in, just go with one more, just because we had a little bit, first of all, I understand, you know, the, the, um. The noise complaints, you know, from the neighbors regarding the construction, I understand it's an inconvenience, but it's also a necessary. Um, component of the project when you had to get into the foundation and that sort of thing, um. So that's not, that's not really a, a major concern, obviously, um, as far as the, um, the, the parking and the traffic flow concerns that are raised. Um, it does seem to me that, that you've addressed these significantly with the, the pass through parking, uh, drop off section. Um, but it is reasonable to assume that, um. On, on evenings where there is a, a, a concert scheduled, um, there will be some parking along the street?
It, it could happen, but I would imagine that, you know, people don't come by themselves to these events all the time, so. Even though there may be more than thirty six people, it won't be. Don't all have their own cars, you know, um, but yeah, there, there's a good chance of people parking in the street, fair enough.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to acknowledge that, uh, you know, I don't think it's a huge problem, um, you know, you have the, the musicians, you have the, the people attending, people working the shows, so it, it. I mean, it's, it's likely going to overflow the parking lot, um, on, on a night of performance, it's just my guess, um.
That was true before.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Right.
And there's on street, legal on street parking on that, on Mountain Street there.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, and, um, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I understand that, you know. Yeah, yeah, I understand that. And I'm not, I'm not, you know, I understand that, you know, I just want to make sure we're addressing all of the concerns of the of the people who wrote in or gave comments, so at least to have them heard and addressed. And so I I think we've done that. I think that have you reached, I I don't think it's obviously relevant necessarily to the application, but are you also still working with the the funeral home to to allow them to park in the lot when it's not in use?
Yes, I spoke with them right when we first bought the building about being completely willing to share as as much as they need in any time that there's space there. It was a very friendly conversation. And they also offered that they would support us if they weren't around and we needed a couple of spots in their parking lot, so it was it was a very neighborly conversation.
Great, okay. I don't have anything further. Does anybody else? Just want to give the board one final chance before we go to public comment again. Okay, we're going to now open the hearing again to public comment. If anybody, this is your last opportunity to comment on the project. Once this public hearing is closed, no more evidence can be taken. So speak now and forever. Hold your peace. Okay, hearing none, I will then ask the board again. I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but if there's any further questions. Go ahead and close the public hearing. And we will now move into deliberation of the board. So I guess we need a motion and a vote for this one. I move we close the public hearing? A motion and a second, roll call vote. Chris O. Mark. Pat. And tonight from me, so moved. Okay. We are now at the approval criteria portion of the application. As you know, the the applicant did provide their detailed responses, so the board may refer to those. And as always, we are going to move through these one by one, and if they are not applicable, we will so state, but I will bring.
Can I ask for a reminder on that catch basin?
Yeah.
Replace and enlarge whether, just replace, you know, just replace. Well, what's there is kind of ripped up. Kind of thing, so putting any real catch basin in, calling up our type S catch basin, which is two by two, one three three cast.
And that was that was depression per day?
I assume it was, and I remember the, I thought I thought it was in large as well, like maybe.
Yeah, I thought there might have been something like that. I'm looking at the letter now. Trying to find it here.
Well, certainly will be larger, what we're predicting will be larger than what's there.
Yeah, he does. He does specifically state in his letter, it is recommended that the corner catch basin be replaced and increased in size as part of this project.
That is the case, okay.
Yeah. So I'm sure you I'm sure you'll I'm sure you'll work with Dave on that. Yeah, okay, so now we we are into the the step by step approval. Let's see where we were here. All right. Oh, I think we did skip over standing. Did we do that? I don't think we did. So we do need to have a, what's that?
Start there, please.
Yeah, so you know, Jeremy's already offered testimony regarding his review for completeness, and we've had a memo from the from the planner, from Shelly. But we do need to move, I'll move that the applicant has standing based on the deed submitted with the application, showing that the property is owned by the applicant. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote. Pat?
Aye.
Chris O.
Aye.
Mark? Okay, and it's an eye for me, finding that the applicant has standing. Now we will move on to the specific site plan approval criteria from Article seven. Number one is, I'll read each one and then we'll discuss. Number one is preserve and enhance the landscape. The landscape shall be preserved in its natural state insofar as practical by minimizing tree removal, disturbance of soil, and retaining existing vegetation during construction. After construction is completed, landscaping shall be designed and planted to define, soften, or screen the appearance of off-street parking areas from the public right of way and abutting properties and or structures, and to minimize the encroachment of the proposed use on neighboring land uses. Discussion?
I'll make a motion that based on the application and the standard of the map.
Okay, a motion and a second. Mark?
We're voting up or down?
Yeah, up or down unless you want to discuss.
No, aye.
Chris O.
Aye.
Pat? And it's an eye for me. Motion carries. Number two is erosion control. A, preservation and protection of natural vegetation where possible. B, keeping duration of exposure of disturbed soils to as short a period as possible and stabilizing the disturbed soils as quickly as practicable. C, use of temporary vegetation or mulching to protect exposed critical areas during development. D, use of debris basins, sediment basins, silt traps, or other acceptable methods to trap sediment from stormwater runoff. E, no storage of fill materials within fifty feet of the bank, there's any stream intermittent or perennial or body of water. And F, no removal of topsoil from any lot except that for, except for that removed from areas to be occupied by buildings, paving, or other surfaces that will not be revegetated. And I will just go on record in saying from my from our sidewalk, I felt like it was a a stand up job on the erosion control of this project. Do you agree, Jeremy?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah. Any motion or discussion from the board?
I would make a motion that based on what we saw on the sidewalk and the application and the agreement with Department of Public Works to replace catch basin, the standard has been met.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Chris O.
Aye.
Pat? Mark?
Aye.
It's an eye for me. So moved. Number three is the relationship of the proposed building to the environment and neighboring buildings. The physical placement of proposed buildings or structures on the site shall fit harmoniously within the terrain of the site and the neighboring buildings or structures, taking into account the bulk location and height of the buildings or structures and such natural features as slope, soil type, and drainage ways. Proposed buildings or structures shall not interfere unreasonably with the solar access of existing buildings or adjacent parcels. Discussion?
I'd like to make a motion based upon the sidewalk and review of the application that we meet the criteria for number three.
We have a motion and a second. Take a vote, Mark?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Chris O.
Aye.
And it's an eye for me, so moved. Four, vehicular access, parking, and circulation. The proposed site layout shall provide for safe access to and egress from public and private roads. A, any exit driveway shall be designated as provided following minimum site distance measured in each direction as measured from the point at which the driveway meets the public or private right of way. B, the street serving the site shall be adequate to carry the anticipated traffic and the site plan shall locate points of access to avoid hazardous conflicts with existing turning movements and traffic flows. C, pedestrian ways shall be safely separated from vehicular traffic. I will note that we have a sign off letter from the Chief of Police of Town of Camden attached to your packet. Any discussion?
I would make a motion that based on the application and the sign off letter from the Chief of Police, the standard has been met.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll go to a vote. Mark?
Aye.
Chris O. Pat?
Aye.
And that's an eye for me, so moved. Moving on to surface water drainage, adequate provisions shall be made for the surface drainage so the removal of storm waters will not be unreasonably have an unreasonably adverse effect on neighboring properties, downstream water quality, soil erosion of the public storm drain system. Whenever possible, onsite absorption of runoff water shall be used to minimize discharges from the site. Drainage facilities shall be designed for a twenty five year storm frequency. And on this one, we have the sign off letter from the Director of Public Works with the condition that the the one drainage public storm drain catch basin be enlarged and and replaced, replaced and enlarged. To which the applicant has agreed. Discussion?
Based upon the application, I would like to make a motion to approve the surface water drainage section.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Take a vote. Pat?
Aye.
Chris O. Mark? It's an eye for me, so moved.
I just want to go back to sort of an amendment on on number four, and we also had a letter from the Road Commissioner to support that.
That's true. Shall we amend that motion?
Yeah.
So we have a friendly amendment to the motion to approve vehicle four, just to include the reference of the letter from the Road Commissioner.
So.
Second.
We'll just vote on that again, just to be sure we cover our bases. Pat?
Aye.
Chris O.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
It's an eye for me. Thanks, Chris O, for that. Special, let's see, we're on public utilities now. Number six, the development shall not impose an unreasonable burden on sewers and storm drains, water lines, or other public utilities. New utilities shall be sized and existing utilities upgraded to adequately handle the demands of the development. We also have here a sign off letter from the wastewater superintendent.
I will make a motion that with the letter from the wastewater superintendent and the information provided by the applicant, including the report from Interstate Septic, the standard has been met.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Take a vote. Mark?
Aye.
Chris O.
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
That's an eye for me, so moved. Number seven is the special features of development. Exposed storage areas, exposed machinery installation, service areas, truck loading areas, utility buildings, and similar structures shall have setbacks and screening to provide a buffer to site and sound sufficient to minimize or adverse impact on other land use in the development area and on surrounding properties.
Based on the application, I would like to make a motion to approve the special features of development.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Take a vote. Chris O.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
So moved. Excuse me. Number eight, exterior lighting. All exterior lighting shall be designed and shielded to avoid undue adverse impact on neighboring properties and rights of way. I believe we, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that based on the application and the comments tonight, the standard has been met.
We have a motion and a second. Pat?
Aye.
Chris O.
Aye.
Mark? That's an eye for me, so moved. Uh, number nine is emergency vehicle access. Provisions shall be made for convenient and safe emergency vehicle access to all buildings and structures at all times of the year, including twenty foot wide fire lanes at locations as may be recommended by the fire department. You have a sign off letter from the fire chief on this one.
I'd like to make a motion that the emergency vehicle access given our sign, whatever the fire chief has met requirements.
Second.
Motion and a second. We'll take a vote. Mark? I didn't hear, maybe I missed something. Oh, yeah, okay. Pat?
Aye.
Chris O.
Aye.
It's an eye for me. Motion carries. We are on to number ten, special criteria for peers and wars, number eleven, designing construction. Yeah. Go ahead, Chris O.
Number ten is not applicable. This is my motion.
Do you want to lump number eleven in there too?
And twelve.
Yeah, no twelve on my page, but yeah, let's do that.
Do you want to do them one by one or?
I think we could do them all together.
I'll make a motion that numbers ten, eleven, and twelve are not applicable. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Pat?
Aye.
Chris O.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
That's an eye for me. The motion carries. Okay, that is it for the site approval criteria. One more motion that we would like to, that I would like to make is just to, I move that we provide that in approving this application that we have relied on the information and testimony as provided by the applicant.
And and from department staff.
And from department staff. Do I have a second?
Second, but then we need to do a final motion first.
I think we do this and then we do that.
I think you could roll it into one.
I just, I just follow in what Cheney lays out for us.
Don't, hey. Well, we could, and I think that's right. We can, I will continue with my motion and that based on that information provided, that we approve the application. Can I get a second on that? All right, thank you, Pat. Take a vote. Chris O.
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
That's an eye for me, so moved. That includes, I think, our business on the site application. Thank you all for your attendance and your diligence and the information you provided. Look forward to having you as neighbors in Camden now.
Thank you very much.
That'll be available for our signatures.
Yeah, soon. Yeah.
Jeremy, do we need to discuss anything as far as future meetings? I'm not, I'm not picking you up very well.
It's Mark with everybody.
I'll send an email to everybody as well.
Okay.
Oh, I'd like for the select holder, you know, we had talked about meeting the select shore to discuss the short term rental situation. I mean, you guys spend months and months and months on looking at what's going on with short term rental and the impact on housing. Yeah. Chris O is working on it.
Yeah.
He's pretty close to finishing it, so.
I was waiting, I wanted to see what happened in Portland. I was waiting, uh, I wanted to see what happened in Portland.
Oh, perfect.
I wanted to tie that in, share what we have heard about.
Um, so I, I got, I'm gonna reach out to Bob, um, the Chair of the Select Board and see whether we can do a workshop, I think it's critical, I mean, I would, you guys want something forward for the Select Board? That the Select Board is not gonna be for, um, or get behind, or, you know, this. If any is discussion, um, and I grant, I will take granted, it's available for me with us. Um, they've done, um, they reviewed the entire Hallie Online platform, they gave me a report on what's available. Uh, as they're available for need review all, they'd like to need review, I'll take a few of them only on Zoom, so they don't need a meeting. For that one, if you like, that might be the next meeting, um, just do a Zoom meeting with the grant. Um, within the online, um, that permanent, this, and Talia, and short-term rental.
That'd be great.
That sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And then I'll try to get the Select Board to have a workout, um, I know Tom behind us, Tom Hestrom is the new liaison to the planning board, he's a Select Board member, um, just came to liaise on last, last couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and hi, Tom, and thank you, I'm glad that you're, you're with us. Um, sorry, I couldn't be there today in person, um, but I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Ethan, glad to be a part. But so, Tom, just to your, uh, um, the board's spent many months looking at short-term rentals and the impacts on, on on housing, um, they did look at Far Harbor, uh, Rockland, Kennybunk.
Elizabeth.
Yarmouth? Okay.
Kevin Elizabeth.
People have looked at one town, probably were handling them, um, there is one town, I think it was Kittery right now, I I heard is, is it's up upwards of fifteen percent of their dwelling, dwelling unit total in Kittery is now short-term rental. Um, which is significant when you're talking how to address housing issues in town and communities.
I'm dating Bruce from a friend who did a study in Portland.
Okay.
Like, two years ago, but.
So they, they spent a lot of time, we're around this in the spring, early summer, um, and they didn't wanna go forward and further without having a workshop with the Select Board to see where the Select Board was on this kind of issue. Um, because they, well, I think currently, I think the board, if you've had your brothers, you would move forward with drafting some zoning amendments to address short-term rentals. Um, if they don't wanna put something forward, that's just gonna go to the Select Board to get killed, um, you know, I think they wanna try to work with you all, um, so I'm gonna reach out to Bob, we can copy you through email. And if you have a draft, I'd be happy to look it over, or.
Yeah, we're not, we're not really at the draft stage yet, but we have had some, some meetings on it, and um, I think, you know, uh, if if we, if we have, uh, you know, the workshop, we'll be able to present the discussions that we have had, where we've kind of ironed some things out. I mean, if you're really interested in it, I'm sure you can go back and view those on YouTube, but I don't know that that's the best use of your time, I think we can summarize it for you pretty quickly when we come in. Um, we're not, we're not there with the draft ordinance at all yet, I think that's based on Jeremy's recommendation that we take the temperature of the board and find out that, you know, where where you guys are and what the, what the um, general um, outlook is for for regulating short-term rentals before we went, went ahead with that step.
I think, and I would think that, you know, the general workshop format is, it's, it's a discussion, so don't feel like you need to, I mean, you said we're, I I don't think the board is getting hammered. I think the board's gonna be interested to hear what you have to say, and we're gonna, you know, work with you on creating something.
That's right.
That's what a workshop is.
Right, yeah, that's exactly right, and that's why we, we think that's the next best step.
I, I will say, yesterday, um, there was the Mid Coast Council of Governments, um, annual, um, General Assembly meeting that Shelly and I went to, Audrey and I are both on that board, um, and we broke out into some groups, and I was in a group um, that was discussing some issues that are happening in the region, and this region goes from Brunswick and Popsom all the way to Belfast, and that's Mid Coast Council of Governments' service area. And one of the top issues, um, was, you know, housing, 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 um, and economic development, the two issues that I think are the most ones, and when it came to housing, everyone was saying the same thing, short-term rentals, we gotta somehow tackle short-term rentals. Because even LD twenty oh three, which Shelly's gonna start working on, because we gotta get our organs up um, with, with the new legislature, that the legislature passed um, on facilitating more housing, there's, we can facilitate as much housing and people can build as much housing, but what frankly, I think's gonna happen is those are gonna be short-term renters.
Yeah.
Up and down the coast, so, um, what I did suggest to McClough, which is Mid Coast Southern Council of Governments, is to reach out to a firm like Rannickus because I think some of this needs to be tackled on a legislative level, um, but I don't think they have the data, they have no information. But if reasonably, we could come to the legislature, legislators and say from Brunswick to Belfast, fifteen thousand dwelling units are short-term rentals that five years ago weren't.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's significant, um, and I think that's a number, honestly, I think that'll be the number in Brunswick to Belfast.
Yeah, I think you're probably not that far off, it's too bad Shelly has nothing to do in her first couple of months on the job.
Jump to the five.
Well, bringing up the, breaking, getting a code up to snuff, so, that should take a little.
Uh, well, we are, just that you know, we're gonna have to get on the LD twenty oh three, because in order to get voted, I mean, these need to be supposedly in line for July one, they're effective. And that means getting the voters in June, which means we've gotta have pretty quickly, um, get some stuff done by, and mid-February, have some final length, or so it's um, goes to hearing with you guys in March and the Select Board at the end of March.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was exactly my point, um, so, yeah, we'll be.
Keep here that there is movement, um, in the legislature to, um, to tweak LD twenty oh three, um, somewhat, so, um, we'll see what that means.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Both communities are concerned that if they trampled on home rule of order, um.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand that, that critique. Um, hey, uh, Criss-O, do you wanna, do you wanna gently guide, uh, Mark into the next great motion, so that he can?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
It's, it's the honor for the rookie.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm off, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.